You guys wait a minute.
Okay, my watch still says.
Mics on. Okay, we call the meeting to order. And is there anything emergent to add to the agenda?
Yes, I want to talk about fire bans and he's closed.
Emergent?
Yeah.
You want that to be D and move legal to E?
I don't care.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else was in emergency? Seeing none, we have somebody. James? On favor? Opposed, it is carried. And moving on, we have accounts payable for introductions.
Information.
Cathy? Any questions or concerns? James?
I see we made um another payment to the second street project for engineering. I believe we had one last month too. Is this just like stuff they forgot to bill or?
This is Z F T O O O six seven six six E to W S B?
Yep. As they were like roughly around the same amount too, I think. But make sure we're not getting that.
It was actually two sets that were missed on G F T on previous invoice, also it really didn't.
So you avoided the one and gave another?
No, it was just a two cent invoice and in with the uh the other engineering invoice, there was just a small two cent.
Six for six thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars.
And now you have four cents?
Yeah.
Yeah, and?
Previous payment is ninety-two cents, is what you're saying?
No, so the the previous payment missed two cents. So there was six thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-two cents of an invoice for general engineering and two cents for second street. That's all.
Okay. So it's just the description is not
Yeah.
very, if the description is misleading.
Yes.
Okay. Good.
I have one other question.
Okay.
So then the next line, six seven six seven. Well, it says check tank was hot water tank, but didn't we have one like a month ago that was repairing the hot water tank?
Yes, there's multiple hot water tanks at the arena. This one's for the showering minutes.
Okay.
Larry replaced two of them.
Yeah, well, that's.
These guys replaced two of them the year before.
That's why I was surprised for checking them, but it as long as something else.
It was something else completely.
That's all.
Hey. Anybody else? Chris?
Uh radar speed sign? What is that?
Really?
I know where it is. Is that the one we purchased?
Yes.
Okay. It seemed weird. Was that fuel for the radar?
No, so because we get our fuel from canoe, uh the speed sign was forty-eight hundred dollars. The rest is fuel.
It says fuel and?
Seems odd to lump them together, so.
Oh.
And I didn't know that we purchased the radar.
Yes.
That's good. I didn't read the report last, but yeah, I guess I did remember that then.
Good. Any other questions? All in favor of receiving information opposed, it is carried. Moving on to delegations, we have Derek Taylor. A P M G here to present the twenty twenty-three draft financial statement. Welcome, York.
Thank you very much. You already introduced me, so I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to talk about your audit. Um before I take us into the financial statements, and I apologize, Jimmy, got to listen to this full speed for anyone today. Uh whenever auditor meets with those charged or governed or part go through certain things, so you take us through those first, that helps us into the into the financial statements. So the first item is just with respect to independence. Um we take steps to ensure K P M G myself, everybody that's on the audit team is independent of the town, so we make sure that nobody it has any financial relationships with anybody in decision-making capacity. It's usually we're southern up, this is where I joke and I look around to make sure I'm not related to anybody on council. I'm hot, so that's always a good thing. Um and those types of things, but despite joking there, uh we do take independence seriously, so we can just reaffirm our independence uh with the town. Next item is just the status of the audit. So we've completed our auditing process with Canadian generally accepted auditing standards. They're prepared to issue unmodified or clean audit opinion, subject to our discussion here tonight. Next item, we're required to talk a little bit about, and it is more important than we discussed this year than in prior years is with regards to the framework. Like your financial statements are prepared in accordance with. So the financial statements are prepared in accordance with Canadian public sector accounting standards. So that's the same standard, you know, municipalities, uh your peer group, other government organizations prepare. Uh their financial statements in accordance with. The reason it's important we talk about this framework this year is there was some new standards brought in this year. Um there was a couple of standards related to um investments and just due to the investments of the town pools, there was no real impact on the financial statements as a result of those. However, uh there is a new standard with regards to asset retirement obligations. And so what this framework required was that organizations like the town, quote, estimate what the future liability costs would be to retire some of their tangible capital assets. So these included things like uh lagoons, buildings with asbestos and those types of things. So anywhere where we have a legal obligation to retire assets in the future, management was required to estimate the values of those and record those obligations on your financial statements. Now, this standard allows you to restate your prior years because you've had these obligations for a number of years. They're not brand new just because the accounting standards have changed. So while we're going through the financial statements, one of the things you'll note this year is that the comparative figures are noted as restated. A lot of times when people get restatements, they're worried that, oh, they went back and they changed something in the prior year. We did this year, but that's because of the new standard. Okay, there's also a note in the financial statements that outlines what those changes were. So we need to take last year's uh audited statements of the town and compare them to the comparatives that you you'd notice are different, but there is a full note that kind of disclosed why and what those changes are. Other than that, that's the biggest thing, and one of the biggest things that will be that you'll notice as we're going through the financial statements. The next item we're required to talk about would just be the accounting policies used by management preparing the financial statements. So the policies that the town uses use this year is very consistent with what you see in the prior years. There's a number of pages in the financial statements to go through the significant accounting policies. They're very consistent with what you've seen in the past. The one change again this year is because of the new framework with regards to asset retirement obligations. There's some, there is a new policy this year with respect to that. The next item we're required to talk about would be the use of the estimates in preparing the financial statements. So when we look at the town's financial statements, there's basically three significant areas of estimates. The first one is around deferred revenue. So what happens is the town receives funding with external stipulations attached to it quite often. So you'll receive funding that would be for a certain capital project or something like that. What the estimate that management makes is that they are required to um meet those stipulations in order to recognize the revenue. So even though you've received money, if you haven't met those stipulations, you're not able to recognize the revenue right away. So it sits on your statements as deferred revenue. That'll be important because as we're talking a little bit later on, you'll see in the financial statements that our deferred revenue decreased quite a bit this year. It's because we spent some of the capital money that we had prior years. So as auditors, what we're required to. Sorry, it was very big last year. Your deferred revenue was quite high. Yeah, yeah. And so this year it's down quite a bit again because of the capital spending. And so um as auditors, what we're required to do is again, look at kind of that funding that's coming in and looking at how management is indicating that they're meeting those stipulations. And so we look at it, make sure that they're spending money on the capital projects they're supposed to, and therefore recognizing the revenue appropriately. The next item where there's significant estimates in preparing your financial statements would be around attachment capital assets. So speaking of capital spending, so when you guys buy a capital asset or you build a capital project, you take what you spend, it gets set up on your statement of financial position as an asset. Then management estimates the useful life of that asset, and it's amortized into expense over that estimated useful life. So you'll buy asset X, and if it's got an estimated useful life of five years, you basically expense it over five years. And so what we do is we look at that estimated useful life that management's using, we look at your historical experience, what your peer groups are doing, make sure that makes sense. So it's not like you're taking a computer and saying that a computer is going to last ten years, right? It's not going to last ten years. Um and then the last last area where there's a significant estimate this year is of course the asset retirement obligation. And so what that required management again to do was go out, look at all your tangible capital assets, assess if there was a legal obligation to retire those assets. So a real simple way to think about that is again, asbestos in a building. So if you have a building that was built in the seventies, there's a good chance there's asbestos in it. And there's regulations that require you to abate that asbestos if you retire that building. So management was required to look at all these regulations, look at your assets, and assess these these obligations and upload them in your financial statements. So yeah, what we did was we went in, we looked at how they came up with these estimates, where you brought in experts, where you you know, looked at different costing, what kind of inflation rates you're looking at, what kind of present value rates you're using, make sure that those are. So that was a really big undertaking, not just for the town, but for a lot of government entities this year. A lot of places were pretty stressed out about this placement. You guys did manage to get it in there, get it into your financial statements appropriately. So I'm not sure there's any questions.
No. Not yet. Well, I don't know. It could be.
Um well, pause actually if there are any questions before I take us into the financial statements. Good. So taking us into the financial statements, um the first page is just management's responsibility for financial reporting. So basically, even though we assist in 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 preparing the financial statements, the underlying information and all the assumptions of management, that's all what that document talks to. The next couple of pages are our auditors' report. So again, as I mentioned before, it's an unmodified or clean audit opinion. Talks about the basis of our opinion, just indicating again that we conducted an audit in accordance with Canadian generally accepted auditing standards. The the reporter goes on to talk again a little bit about management's responsibilities on the financial statements as well as our responsibilities under the Canadian generally accepted auditing standards. As I mentioned before, um it's a clean opinion and or non-modified opinion. The first page with numbers on it is our statement of financial position. And this is essentially a snapshot of where the town was at December thirty-first. I'm just going to talk about some of the key variances as we're going through, but just again to note that when we look at that that comparative column, the twenty twenty-two column, is restated. Again, there is a note, so note three talks about all those changes, but the changes in this case were again, the adoption of that asset retirement obligation section. So starting off right at the top, we look at our cash position. We noticed that is a bit higher than the prior year. This year about five million, last year two thousand and four million, really the increase in cash there is largely driven by our operations. We're going to talk about our statement of cash flows a little bit later, but just generally when we look at our 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 day-to-day operations, we get positive cash flow, cash inflow, that's what's driving that. Next, we've got our trade and other receivables. They're very consistent with the prior years, about thirty thousand dollar difference. That's really just some timing differences from that perspective. When we get down to our taxes and grants and lieu. Uh when we look at that, we see that it it is is down from the prior year, and really this is just um the main reason for the decrease is that you have your local improvements, and so that that decrease there is just that we're collecting some of the local improvement levies from prior years. So the local improvement levies, when they're set up, they're set up as gross amount, then each year you're you're collecting those amounts. There's a note a little bit later that shows that that decrease there, that's what's driving that. The next note is our loan receivable. And so this is our loan with uh with regards to the the waste uh authority. And so we're just seeing our normal regular scheduled payment repayment on that. So that's why we see that asset number down from the prior year. Next page is our our next item on the party is our investments in marketable securities. We see a slight increase from the prior year. Twenty-seven point seven this year compared to just about twenty-seven point two last year. The main reason for that is just the reinvestment of our investment income. This year, when we get onto our statement of operations, we'll see that our investments did a little bit better this year. Of course, that's due to much higher uh interest rates and those types of things this year. Then we've got our land held for resale, a little bit of a decrease there just as a result of some sales. And then we have our other inventories that that are held for resale. Those numbers largely stay consistent with the prior year. Moving down, we get into our financial liabilities, and so these are our financial obligations. Um looking at our accounts payable, we do see a bit of an increase from the prior year this year. So this year at two million, just over one million last year. The main reason for that large increase is just due to some of the the capital projects that we were doing at year end. So we were finishing up some things, so we had some large payables this year. Next is our employee benefit obligations. This is largely our vacation payable. This is down this year, which is good. You like to see that kind of going down, suggesting that your employees are using their vacation and those types of things. Next number is our deferred revenue. I talked about this one a little bit earlier when we were talking about estimates. So we do see that that dropped from three million to just about one million this year. And again, that's largely due to you guys meeting some of the stipulations attached to some M S I funding and those that type of capital funding. Then we get our long-term debt. This is the uh the debt that we've incurred, and we see the decrease this year, and that's just our regular scheduled repayments of our debt. Then we've got our asset retirement obligation. So this new, this number is the new number on your financial statements. So again, what management has done is they've had to go out, estimate what the cost of this future retirement is going to be, and then do a present value of it. And so right now we're sitting at about one point eight million dollars estimate is into what your your legal obligations would be. When you look at that, now the idea is that that number will probably accrete over time, it could increase over time. But again, if you were to sell a building before the uh asbestos abatement occurred, that number would come off. If you were to buy a building that had asbestos in it, that number would go up. So it all just kind of depends on what's occurring within those capital assets, and what's going to drive that. Below that, we have a subtotal called net financial assets. Basically, what this number is, is if you were to take all your financial assets, you subtract your liabilities. This shows whether or not you could you could basically settle all of your obligations. Last year, we had a positive net financial assets of twenty-five billion. This year, just about twenty-seven five, just about twenty-seven point six. So that main increase there, there's a statement that goes over it, but really the increase there is just the result again of that positive cash flow this year. Then we move down to our non-financial assets. So these are the assets that we have that we consume in order to provide services to our stakeholders. So the first one, of course, is our tangible capital assets. We do see that there's a little bit of an increase this year over the prior year, and that mainly is because of our new capital assets or capital investment that we've made this year exceeded our depreciation. So if you remember, I talked about our estimates again, the depreciation is when we find an asset, it gets set up on this statement as a tangible capital asset. And then we add uh over estimated useful life, we amortize it into our expenses. So that amortization, um the amount of the assets that we purchased is about four hundred thousand more than what that amortization expense was. So we invested a little bit more than what was expensed this year. So we've got our prepaid uh expenses and deposits. That's staying relatively consistent, a little bit of an increase again just due to timing. And then our inventory for consumption. There's a note on that a little bit later. A lot of times that number again just fluctuates, you know, depending upon what we're doing, purchases and those types of things. Overall, when we get to the bottom line, we have a number called our accumulated surplus. And the accumulated surplus is basically the town's residual ownership and its assets less obligations. So if you will, it's the 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 equity, if you will, that the town has in its assets less, less what it owes. Um a little bit later on, there's a statement that kind of breaks that into kind of three buckets, and I'll go through that when we get to that. You can go to the next page, please. This page is the statement of operations. What this page tries to do is it tries to tell the story of what occurred financially throughout the year. So the first first group of numbers is your operating revenue. So we start looking at those types of things. We look at the very top, we see our net municipal taxes was up a little bit this year. A little bit less than what we had 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 budgeted for. It's a couple of things that factor into that, you know, assessed rates, mill rates, our the amount recognized out of the local improvements, those types of things. So a little bit of an increase over the prior year, but fairly consistent. We've got our user fees and sales. Uh that number we did see again, a little bit of an increase there. Again, that's just driven by kind of the activity and stuff that occurs throughout the year. And we've got our government transfers from operating. So a little bit of an increase this year. Our investment income, we saw quite a bit more of an increase this year, again, largely driven by those interest increases in interest rates. Our other revenues, uh rentals, penalties and costs of taxes all stayed relatively consistent, fluctuating a little bit depending upon what was going on in the year. But item right at the bottom of that group, you know, kind of sets up a little bit more what we got in insurance reimbursements. We did get some insurance money back this year. Help offset some costs that we had in previous years. Then we get down to our expenses, and so looking at our expenses overall, we see that they've increased by about half a million, so they went from fourteen point two to fourteen point seven this year. There's a number of items that occur in here that we'll go through a little bit more when we get to schedule five, but really again, what we're seeing is kind of some fluctuations occurring kind of based on kind of the activity and those types of things that we did in the year, but largely when we look at it, they mostly stayed the same. Uh like I said, a bit of fluctuation again due to activity. Below that, we come to our deficiency of revenues over expenditures from operations. We see this year due to the increases in our revenues and just a modest increase in those expenses. We see that that D or the D deficiency decreased from one point five last year to just six hundred and seventy this year. And then below that, we've got our government transfers for capital. So again, this goes back to that estimate that I spoke about earlier, where we've received funding that was for capital purposes. We deferred it in the prior year. We spent it on capital assets this year, meeting those stipulations, and therefore recognizing the amounts into revenue. So overall, we saw an excess of revenues over expenditures of about two point seven this year compared to a deficiency of one point three last year. Again, a lot of that has to do with the timing of both that depreciation that I spoke about earlier, that amortization over that estimated useful life, and the recognition of our government transfers for capital. If you were to factor out the amortization, those numbers would probably look a lot closer than what they look look from comparison from last year to current year. The next page takes us to a statement of changes in net financial assets. So as I mentioned before, the town is in a net financial asset position. This this page here just trying to explain why it improved from the prior year when we look at our net financial asset position. So again, it's largely driven by the fact that we do have that excess of revenues over expenditures of two point seven this year. Then you look, we try to factor out those those changes in the capital assets, so that acquisition, those new capital assets, about three point nine. So guys just low invested four million dollars in new capital assets, then you have that non-cash expensive amortization of three point, just about three point six. So that difference there being kind of one of the main changes in what's going on within our our um our changes in net financial assets when you factor those two items up. The next page is our statement of cash flows. And so whenever you're looking at a set of financial statements, be it a municipality or a not-for-profit or a for-profit, it's always good to look at the statement of cash flows because it kind of tells the narrative for the organization for the year. And what it's trying to do is it basically tries to take your excess of revenues over expenditures or deficiency in the prior year and kind of explain, you know, how did that impact our cash? But like I said, it often does a good job of summarizing kind of the narrative for the year. So we started to talk, and then the first two items we do is we add back kind of non-cash items. We add back that amortization estimate as well as the loss on 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 tangible capital assets. We had a small loss on our on the disposition of some assets. Then the next grouping there um takes us through kind of the changes in our non-cash assets and liabilities. So one of the big things that was, we see it, we saw decrease in our deferred revenue, right? And so that's kind of a I I uh uh an increase in our cash, if you will, those types of things. So when we get down to the that first subtotal, we see that our day-to-day operations basically generated five point nine million dollars in cash compared to three point eight in the prior year. So looking at it, day-to-day operations, just about two million more dollars a year coming in the door. So the next question is, well, then what did we spend money on? We get down to the next part, and we see the acquisition of our tangible capital assets, about four million was spent on capital assets. So while just about six million came in the door, four million was invested. Then we reinvested in some of our investments, another half a million, and then we repaid our long-term debt, showing that our cash overall increased by about a million dollars. So that's kind of like I said, the kind of a summary or, you know, good to look at the narrative for the year. After that, we get into the notes of the financial statements. And so if we start, we start on page five. We went to page nine. That basically takes us to our significant account. So as I mentioned before, the most of the policies were very consistent with the prior year, no major changes. However, there is one in here um on page seven at the very top H, where we talk about the assets and retirement uh obligation obligation. So as I mentioned, there's that new standard this year. This just talks about the policy that you guys adopted with regards to those. On page nine, note two, we talk about future accounting pronouncements. And so just like the asset retirement obligation was a new change in the accounting framework, note two talks about some of the new changes that are going to be coming in the standard. So there's some new standards coming around revenue, uh public-private partnerships and purchased intangibles. Largely, um we don't anticipate those to have a major impact on the town, but it's always important that we put those changes in so that users are aware of those changes, just like the asset retirement obligation was mentioned in your notes for a number of years, just so people were aware that it was coming. Note three is kind of a big note, goes for a couple of pages. And this note here basically talks about that restatement. So it talks about the change in accounting policies, the adoption of the new framework. And so at the front, it just talks about the fact that you did adopt the new asset retirement obligation. When we flip to page eleven, there's a long table that shows what the change is. So again, if we look at the prior year, these audited statements, you'd see that the numbers would be consistent with what's shown as the previously reported. Then we'd have the amount adjustments recognized. So this is the changes that occurred as a result of the new standard and then the restated twenty twenty-two numbers. So again, where we all of a sudden have this new one point eight million dollar obligation. We've always had that obligation, just the standard didn't require you to record it until this year. The standard allows you to go back and resee prior year to show that you've always had that rather than showing it as a new expense in the current year. Then starting on page twelve, note four, we get into some of the joints that provide a little bit more information, some of the numbers on your statement of financial position and operations. So note four just takes us to our cash and cash equivalents. You were not holding anything outside of normal kind of cash or or very short-term cash-like investments. Note five gives us our taxes and grants and lose. So basically, again, showing that local improvement taxes receivable decreasing, and that's why we mainly see that decrease that I spoke about earlier. Note six um shows us our loan receivable from initial waste management authority. Note seven talks about some of our other investments. So again, short-term notes and then our bonds. Note eight gives us a breakdown of inventory held for consumption. Note nine gives us the net book value of our tangible capital assets. Again, just breaking it down from a cost perspective, less the accumulated amortization to show kind of the net book value. You have a schedule later on that shows, breaks it out a little bit more clearly indicating the cost and yet uh the amortization. Note ten takes us to our deferred revenue. So it shows it shows kind of at the top, just generally kind of the amounts. Um and then down below kind of shows how it flowed through your statements this year. So again, some of the key things to think of is last year, you know, we looked at some of that M S I and some of the Canadian Community Brit Building Fund, us recognizing a large portion of that, us meeting those stipulations that I spoke about earlier on spending that money on capital. Note eleven takes us to our long-term debt. So again, just showing the regular scheduled repayment as well as the it's on May throughout the year. Note twelve gives us information on our debt limits. So under the V M G A, um you guys have a debt limit as well as a debt servicing limit. Um this just shows the amount of the limit as well as the servicing limit and the amounts that are unused at this point in time. Note thirteen takes us to the accumulated surplus. Um earlier on, uh we were talking about the statement of financial position. I talked about the accumulated surplus being your residual ownership in your assets less your obligations, and kind of talked about the fact that it's kind of broken into three buckets. So we look at your accumulated surplus of about a hundred and nine billion. Seventy-five million of it is representing your equity in your tangible capital assets. So that when I talk about that residual ownership, you know, just basically seventy-five percent of our three quarters of this tied up in in infrastructure in your capital assets. Then the rest of it, um the other portion of it, we have above twenty-one, just about twenty-two million tied up in reserves. So both capital and operating, your operating reserves at about one point one, your capital reserves at twenty point five. Then we've got our unrestricted amounts at the end of twelve point four. Next page kind of continues on, just shows us how we calculate the um equity and capital assets. So again, it's your net book value of your assets less any obligations attached to it. Note fourteen takes us through that new asset retirement obligation. So again, it just shows kind of the change from the current year, and this accretion expense is just again, the idea is that you're going to constantly kind of do these estimates every year, but in years where you're not doing a full estimate, you're going to see some type of accretion, just to reflect that the costs do kind of increase over time due to inflation and those types of things. Note fifteen defines our segmented disclosures. So there's a schedule coming up that it takes our statement of operations and breaks it down by motion and by object. And this note here basically is just kind of describing kind of what those segments are. Note sixteen is the salary benefits disclosure. So this is a required disclosure under the MGA as well. It just gives the breakdown of compensation paid to counselors as well as kind of designated officers within the town. Page twenty two, note seventeen takes us through the local authorities pension plan disclosure. We participate in the local authorities pension plans. We're just required to disclose how much we contribute on behalf of employees. Note eighteen takes us through some potential contingent liabilities. Note nineteen on page twenty three takes us to financial instruments. It just talks a little bit about whether or not we have any interest rate risks or credit risks or liquidity risks that aren't already defined elsewhere in the financial statements. If you guys were trading in cocoa futures of Bitcoin, there would be something interesting in there. You guys aren't trading anything exotic. So it's kind of a whole no. Note twenty takes us to contractual rights. So again, just some contractual rights that we have. Note twenty one talks about the budget and note twenty two, ultimately these financial statements need to be approved by council. After that, we get into the schedules, the financial statements. Schedule one just takes us to our government transfers. So again, just kind of giving us a breakdown of amounts where we receive some of it for both operating and capital. Schedule two is our segmented disclosure. So again, what this does is takes your statement of operations, breaks it down by both function and object. Then again, just so we can kind of see where the revenue is and where it flows sort of from our various kind of service lines, if you will, as well as our expenses by various objects or salaries of wages and all those types of things. Page twenty seven takes us to our is our statement of challenges and accumulation surplus. So I've spoken earlier again about the accumulated surplus being kind of those three buckets representing your residual ownership. This page here just kind of shows the relationship between those three buckets. So again, when we look at it, you've got about twelve, a little over twelve million tied up in our unrestricted, about twenty one tied up in our restricted, about seventy five in our equity capital assets. Schedule four on page twenty eight takes us to our net municipal taxes. So it shows the gross levy less the requisition. Page twenty nine takes us to schedule five or schedule five, I'm sorry, takes us to our expenses by object. So again, earlier showed the function. Now we should apply object just where you can kind of see some of our changes. So again, we get salaries, wages and benefits, very consistent with the prior year. We did see a little bit more increase in sulfur materials, goods and utilities, again largely being driven by kind of some of the changes and some of the objects and things that we're doing during the year. Page thirty takes us to is our schedule of tangible capital assets. Again, what this one does is earlier, there was a note that showed the net book value of the tangible capital assets. This statement basically here showing our assets at cost less the amortization. So again, that estimate that I spoke about earlier, all of the amortization that have been taken to date. I spent about thirty minutes going through that doesn't do justice to the amount of words you put in throughout the year to get the year, but you just had a really good year. That was about a hundred yard dash three or four minutes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Just a quick question back on the, I forget how it was listed, but the funds owed to employees for banked holiday.
Holidays, yeah.
Liabilities, yeah. Are we kind of in the normal range there? Other municipalities our size or is it high? Is that low?
It's not unusual. This is kind of where you are. And so he's a little bit tough because one of the challenges for for a lot of sized municipalities is that if any problems went on in the years, like people just can't take their vacation. And so you might have kind of two or three employees not able to take vacation before December, which is a bit of a spike. It's good to see down though. When you see that kind of happening year over year over year and people accumulating lots of vacation, that's always an issue. So it is nice to see that you guys can count a little bit, but I wouldn't consider it an issue.
Okay. And every time we see the eighty one million dollars worth of assets, that two million is coming off, right? For asbestos abatement or whatever, because that's because in one of your, one of your charts, you actually show it down at seventy nine.
So the seventy nine amount on.
Because we always have to keep considering that truly not an asset if it's a liability at the same time, right?
Well, that's why you actually have to, can I get you to go to page one?
Page one?
Yeah. So page one, you are.
First of page number.
That's right. That's your statement of financial position. So at the very bottom, or not at the very bottom, when you see your tangible capital assets are eighty one point four.
Yeah.
So that is the net book value of your assets. Okay. Up above it at one point eight is the obligation attached to it. So the asset retirement asset obligation. Little bit later on, when you saw that number that was seventy nine, so we jump to page.
But this eighty one is after the two nine, so technically we have.
No, it's better to kind of think of it as seven. Okay. So it's best to think about the, you have assets, the net of value of eighty one point five. The seventy nine that we're looking at was on page nineteen.
Yeah, it was close, very close to the end.
So that number there is seventy five. And with that, oh, sorry.
Nope, there's another.
Five more pages down.
Yeah, that one says seventy five, but I think in the spread out there's a seventy.
So what that seventy five is, so this number represents the equity in your tangible capital assets. So if we were to take your net value of your capital assets, which is basically the sum of those top two numbers, so you've got a cost of one fifty and accumulated amortization of just oh sixty nine, those two amounts together will come up to that eighty one point four. So that's the net book value of your assets. And then we subtract off the obligations you have attached to those capital assets. So your long term debt. Your the loans are associated with capital. So we have four point two there. And then you've got the asset retirement obligation, the one I pointed each show you up there. So once you take the net value of your assets, less those obligations attached to it, your equity, your net equity or your residual ownership in your capital assets is a seventy five. In that piece sense.
Sure.
Doesn't sound like you're convinced.
Because I know the numbers kept bouncing around and so I didn't know when that two million was factoring in or out or.
So the the two million really only factors into this equity part. So that's what that's where it's factoring into that one point eight is 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 what this number is trying to show is that again, if you think about that accumulated surplus being the residual ownership of all your assets less your liabilities. We started looking at those assets saying, okay, well, we take the net book value of our assets less the two obligations attached to it. Seventy five million represents that equity we have in those capital assets. Then the rest, if you're to back up one more page to page eighteen, so at the very bottom there, you have your total accumulated surplus, so that residual value. So you take the hundred ninety, subtract the seventy five that's right above it, which is your equity. Then you've got thirty four. So that thirty four million represents the rest of the residual ownership that you have. So if you're taking the rest of your financial assets, less the obligations that are not attached to capital, so not the debt or the arrow. You'd come up with that thirty four. That thirty four is then broken into two amounts, amounts that you guys have restricted of twenty one point six and amounts that are unrestricted of twelve point four.
And then the only other question I have is on four million dollars that we owe that we borrowed. If there are frontage levies in there, we still bear the weight of them.
That's.
Even though there's somebody else's.
Is that your, yeah, they're your.
Yeah, but they're attached to a house or a street or whatever. There's still ours. So that's, so is that at least still your debt?
Yeah.
Yep.
When you're going to the.
That's that's what we borrowed over different adventures like the water feet, right? When when we did streets in the old days, anything we borrow money for, like lately, we've been running it with our own money. Because we've only, we're only four million in debt when we could be, while some municipalities have approached the minister to be over their debt limit. I know we could be twenty, but that's not a good place to be.
So I saw the payment structure on that debt. Sorry, yeah, go ahead to cut you off there. I saw the payment structure on that. I didn't see when it was fully paid off though.
The longest one goes to twenty forty or something like that. It does say in there, but they only figure out five years and then they give the lump of what you'll still owe after five.
Yeah, so it does kind of show on the bottom where that it stretches up between.
Does it?
There is one second. Stretch up to twenty four.
Okay, and the refined one's probably the water treatment. Isn't it twenty sixteen? Yeah. Will be twenty one years, so twenty forty one. What page was this debt on again? Sixteen.
And there's.
Yeah, yeah. It's a much smaller number.
Any more questions, Eric? Do you want to run through the other one?
You get to listen to me one more time. I won't take you through all the.
Yeah, so receive your information and approval of the financial statements. Start around that. Any questions? Again, all in favor, opposed, carried? Okay.
Excellent. Don't get the whole this.
So no, I won't do that. It's generally the same.
Those two next up.
Pretty much the same thing though for the second part. So we won't go through the full story, but again, yes. I did meet with the board, the authority earlier today. We went through the financial statements. Again, we issued it on. So just take us, please. So again, this is a statement of financial position. So again, just kind of looking at it, I'll talk on some of the high variances here. So looking at our our cash and cash equivalents, we do see an increase this year. Again, it's largely due to the operations. So again, the waste management authority having a good year from a cash flow perspective. We share trade now the receivables down a little bit this year. Again, it's just due when we look at the state of operations, we see our tonnage is down. So receivables are down a little bit as well. Our investments marketable securities, a little bit of an increase there. Largely, that's just reinvesting some of our interest income and those types of things. Moving down to our financial liabilities, we see our accounts payable and accrued liability statements will be consistent with the prior year up a little bit. Again, just due to timing, we've got our loans payable to both county and the town. Then we've got our asset retirement obligation for the authority. We're on here about five hundred and fifty six right now. The man or the authority also finds itself in a net financial asset position. The improvement from the prior year largely again be driven by those the positive operations. Moving down to our non financial assets, we've got our tangible capital assets. We see that it did go down from the prior year. And the main reason for that this year is of course that the amortization that I spoke about before for you guys, similar to the authority has it. The amortization that will strip the new assets that were acquired this year. In the prior year, the authority had a fair amount of capital investment. This year it didn't have a whole lot of new capital investment. Then we have a little bit of inventory for consumption, a little bit of a decrease again, just due to kind of the timing, what purchases are occurring. At the bottom, our accumulated surplus or that residual ownership going up because of the positive operations. Moving into our next page, we've got our stated operations. So at the very top, you know, revenue, we have our tonnage charged down a bit from the prior year. Again, just do a little bit less activity from that perspective. Our interest income going up a bit again, the interest rates helping us out from there. And then other revenue note that it is down quite a bit from the prior year. That's because in the other year, we had some capital funding that was recognized. So again, not quite recognized in the same as with the deferred revenue, but to hear you guys having received that funding to help with capital purposes last year. We come down to our expenses overall. We say our expenses are down from the prior year. A lot of that is because last year we had a large loss on disposal of some capital assets. We sold off some assets, experienced some losses on those last year. We didn't have this year. At the bottom, we see an excess of revenues over expenditures this year of three, seven hundred and thirty five compared to one point one last year. Again, coming down to to adding on to our accumulated surplus.
Eric, can I ask a question right in your middle?
Absolutely.
So when you're talking, they sold assets less than, oh, is that because when when you're writing them off year over year, they weren't fully written off yet when they actually sold them?
That's correct.
Okay, but you weren't writing them off fast enough.
In this case, yes. Well, it depends on kind of the timing of it. I don't know if you want to, like, explain it some view.
It's it's probably a mixture of the two. We could have sold it for less than its book value at the time.
That that's what's big generally driving the thing. So sometimes it's a case of we maybe weren't advertising it past now, or the market determined it was worth less than how best we had estimated it, we would use it. So you have to remember, when you're selling stuff into the market, then it'll take you a long, you guys were planning on using it for. She might have bought something, used it for, you know, planned on using it for fifteen years, only used it for five, decided it wasn't big enough, sold it. The market determined it wasn't worth what your book value was. So you'd experience a gain or loss according to that. The next page is our statement of changes in net financial assets. So similar to the town. We saw our net financial assets increase here. Again, it takes our excess of revenues over expenditures adjust for the acquisitions this year. So we'll see that we only had about thirty one thousand in new assets this year, with amortization of almost a million and thirty four. So that being kind of the main driver there is the wire and our net financial assets increase. Next, we'll go to our statement of cash flows. So similar story, we kind of look at and started our excess revenues over or expenditures at the top. Kind of focusing in probably again at that subtotal of one point seven this year compared to just about two point three last year. So that again is our cash flow from our day to day operations. So again, pretty, pretty, pretty positive to see cash flow from operations. That's always a good thing. Where the cash went, we had our repayments, our debt to the town and county, and then we had purchases of capital assets and a little bit of net purchases of some of our investments. Overall, again, I've seen our our cash flow increasing from about two point three to just low four like in this year. And after that, we get into the notes of the financial statements. So again, first couple of pages, just taking us through, very consistent with the prior year. We've got our significant accounting policies. I don't know if you guys want me to walk you through all of the notes here. It follows a very similar path that we can with the other ones.
Yep. And these were already approved this afternoon.
They were.
Receiving these for information.
That's correct.
Yep. So you can skip if you want.
Well, there's what you want. I thought I touched already on the highlights.
Yeah, if there's something significant you think will just flip past, then you can bring it up.
No, again, the only thing here was again, the adoption of that new asset retention section. So that section replaced previously, the standard did have a section on landfills. So it spoke about how landfills were supposed to be recorded. This new standard counts for slightly different. And so that's why there's a change there from the prior.
I was surprised to see that that number was as fine as it was considering it's holes with dirt and a couple of small buildings out there, vehicles.
Well, a lot of it has to do with kind of your closure and then you have ongoing post closure obligations with landfills. So you have monitoring costs that go on for a number of years and those types of things. So again, you're trying to estimate all of those and take those into account. Okay, that makes sense.
Not just why I really want to close the. No, it's too expensive. It did have, and you walked away.
The the regulations have changed, that's the place we're allowed to do that. So at one point in time, I believe that that was standard.
Yeah. Source of our neighbors. This dog is the way that's financed. We're done.
I may have to count into you out tonight, so. Didn't see enough coffee.
Yeah, only y'all that want to see the good.
Perfect.
All move that we've received those on purpose too. Any questions? Derek. Okay, all in favor, opposed, carried? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you. You're not billing us the whole bill because it didn't take as long as you thought, right? Well, that'd be nice.
I think we have a quote.
He's like, oh, I.
Thank you guys.
Okay, thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
I got logged back in, that's a long.
Yeah. Okay, well now we are going. Council of April eighth, twenty twenty four for adoption. This one, oh, Matt has turned up. Any questions or concerns? Being none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried, and then the MPC minutes of April sixteenth. Chris. Any questions or concerns? Being none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried, and then the town of Redwood Library Board, February thirteenth for information.
Oh, Jim wasn't there.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, Jim did. Yeah. Questions or concerns?
Why'd you message him?
Okay, good enough for me. Somebody new is taking minutes now instead of Tracy.
Yeah.
Did we vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, opposed, carried. Moving on to bylaws, we have bylaw number nineteen sixty nine slash twenty twenty four being the water conservation and restriction by law, and it's here for third reading.
Third reading?
Yeah. Questions or concerns? Go ahead, Chris.
You got a couple. So obviously in stage one being voluntary, there's no fines associated with stage one.
That's correct.
Okay. And you're asking the golf course for a water reduction plan, or you're asking them to produce one? Did you want a copy of it? Or just that it's in existence?
We have asked all the, some of the users.
Big water users.
And I think they're meeting later this week.
With the golf course? Okay, but when they do make it, do you want a copy of it? Or just know that it exists? How many big water users do we have in town? All the greenhouses. Actually, it said current users, which is not just one that says that they don't just very much.
They don't know. So that also depends, uh, their annual usage fluctuates much like ours, right? So it is dependent on the average that they produce.
So they consider, they consume that here.
It would depend on this one year.
We're considered high user in the summer.
Yeah.
So you were asking them?
Well, I was just, I was just curious because I was, I was talking to one of the car wash owners and I had asked if the town had reached out to talk to them and they said no.
No, no, then we wouldn't.
Yeah.
Not until we get to that stage. This was just to prepare everybody that, hey, we might get there.
Did they get letters though?
Everybody received.
Everybody got.
Yes. As well as high, uh, consumer letters. Those went out to high consumers. And I do believe the, um, the car washers receive those as well.
Well.
Then they wouldn't have been on the list.
It seemed really chalked when I.
No, they use less consumption than normally you would when you're washing your vehicle in your yard.
Just want to make sure that we're letting people that needs it don't know. It's one of the second street.
Any more questions? So residentially, what's the difference between one and two?
One second, I'm just gonna bring it up. Or what they are asked to do?
Yeah.
So.
The wording changes on limit watering your lawn. But yet we still get to water. Up to sixty minutes per day on our odds or even days.
Yeah, so it becomes enforceable.
Uh, yeah, you get fined in stage two.
Okay. Okay, because I was, I read that a few times. I'm going, okay, I don't really see a big reduction.
No, so in stage one, it is just to help people have a guideline. Like generally speaking, this is how you would reduce your water. Um, but stage two, it does become finable.
Okay. All right.
Something about four o'clock time, maybe people spread versus coming there.
I cannot say that we will be doing that, but if drought continues, there will be other enforcement that we will have to look into. And I'm not saying this year, might be years to come, but it may become.
Okay, any other questions? Being none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Great. Moving on for requests for decision, we have the twenty twenty four final operating budget. Chris?
For option one to approve as presented.
Okay. Any questions, James?
It's because someone calling me stupid. I think I asked this question, I don't think that's. At a previous council meeting. Um, under the council, uh, corporate services, so the first section here. We had council salaries changed. And then there's a new column, our new role sort of council fees. I just, could you explain to me what, why that split out again?
There's. There's a policy that was put forward that split your, your wages into two parts. You gotta. It's all really the same thing.
Well, no, I, I get that. It's just when, when you look at this, they're two separate things, then that might cause someone to wonder, well, why? Why is council fees separate here? Are they trying to hide something? Are they not trying to be transparent? Like, so like, I'm just wondering what the difference is between two.
There, there really is no difference. And for whatever reason, I can't get into the policy right now to pull up. What that split is, okay, why it's there.
Do you know the policy number? I'll just read it myself. I, I don't know. Okay, and then I had one more. Two dash six one. Zero zero dash two three three professional services, the one time fee of eight five thousand, that's just a project that we're doing. This year.
Hmm, yes, that is. No, that's a mixture of a couple of projects.
Okay.
I can't even pull up the detail right now. My computer won't. Okay.
Get there.
Okay. And then. So I finally got to two sixty one, James. What numbers I think?
Eighty five, oh, sorry, uh, hold on. It was the eighty five thousand dollar one time payment.
I think that's the final land use.
Plus two sixty one, two three.
So that's the professional services.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's the, the land use by law update, the. Area, you said. There was.
Yeah, this is twenty twenty.
Plan. It's a couple of the planning projects.
Okay.
And we skidded a couple of those planning projects because originally it was over a hundred grand, right? We took some of them off.
Right. And then, uh. The last one that I had a question on was two seven two. Zero eight two five six contracted repair maintenance parks course advisors. Just wondering, I don't remember a ninety five hundred dollar increase. Like that was, it's a one time thing. Did we buy something or? Or are we buying something?
Well, I, I do know that, um, on our pickleball and tennis courts, there's some failures on the surface and. Parks and Rec, we're going to look into seeing if we could get those cavalry people back. I don't know if that's where this falls in. Of course, warranty will definitely be over. Of course. No, there's some cracks and some peeling happening on that court, but I don't know if that's what this is. Well, there's. An increase in contracted R and M, and then there's an increase in the R and M supplies as well. Supplies, I figure, probably just cost increases. Oh, no, that's a one time fee too. And so. Putting an extra sixteen thousand five hundred dollars in the parks. What was that code again? Two seven two, two seven two zero eight two five six. And then. Zero eight five two nine as well. Or sorry, five three one. There's two one time fee payments there.
I'm sorry, that's three months, but the ninety seven hundred dollars was to replace the ball diamond.
Sorry.
We replaced the ball diamond lights with LEDs.
That's the ninety five hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, and then what was the seven thousand? Oh, sorry, what? Five three one, uh, new bleachers of the whole island. Oh, okay. Did we talk about this then?
That's recently, I think, because it was.
Okay, that was all I have. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Being none, Chris made the motion to raise taxes.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Thank you for the team.
So just to confirm the, the other three, um, the eighty five thousand was the municipal development plan, the parks and rec master plan, and the offsite levy by law.
Okay, thank you.
Your computer started working. Sorry, your computer started working.
Yeah.
What was the other one you asked that you couldn't find?
That was it.
That was it? That was the only one? Okay.
Oh, no, the council, the policy for the council split.
Oh, I can't, I still can't get into that. All right. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Okay, splash park opening. Somebody like to move, we consider. Jim? That was your hand or this is not an option at all?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Which one? We might just.
You go with that.
Jim, Jim was being nice and moved, uh.
Option one?
The option three, the option he moved, yeah, I heard him.
Option three, yeah. Okay, well then what, what reduced hours would you like, Jim?
From one to five thirty.
Yeah.
Just, I'm, I'm fighting with the computer.
Oh.
So Alicia has some additional information she would like to share.
All right.
So we received some information from Madison Hat Spray Parks. Uh, they will be opening between May and June first, and they will be open from nine AM to nine PM weather permitting.
What smokes?
Uh.
Seven days a week.
Yep, there's nothing in here that says.
Four hours a day.
Four hours a day. Um, but we reached out to the city. I do not know if any of their, uh, spray parks are re-circuiting. Ours is not.
They're neither because it's too hazardous.
Oh, yeah, you have to treat all that water.
Okay, that's something we didn't have the information for, so, um.
Well, I just know when I read. The, the little blurb that Jamie had put out that they actually were going to be opening their water parks.
Yeah.
Well, on reduced hours, they said, so I mean, what they are on normal hours.
They were previously, but that's the information that's being released on Friday.
So I know, I, so I, I was thinking, well, that's, that's probably an option that we could probably live with in one and two and still be showing constraint.
Yes.
And the way I see it, like, yes, it gets warm here, but if you can't survive till noon before you need to be soaked in water. And I think if it opened at one, any little people that wanted to go and play before other children got out of school. That would give them a couple of free hours and by supper time, they're probably all going home anyway.
Yeah.
Like.
And we will.
If we're not going in, if all of a sudden there turns out to be lots of water, it's easier to stretch it. But it's a, it's a lot harder to make cutbacks.
So our spray park currently, like, it doesn't spray unless you activate the sonar, right?
Yes, exactly.
But it's still on a timer that you can't go at two in the morning and hit the button.
Right, but if no one's using it during the day, it's not running out water till someone goes and pushes the button.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Colin.
Well, my only comment is because I live there, I see the, the teachers from Margaret Woodding and Isabel Cox. Walking with kids to the spray park. Nine or ten o'clock in the morning because in June, it's warm. They're looking for things to do because they've finished their curriculum for the year. So I do see it used nine, ten o'clock in the morning by classes from the schools.
That is true.
I'm not going to comment on that.
Well, we know your thoughts on Prairie Rose.
Well, no, it's not, it's got nothing to do with Prairie Rose. It's called June and school. It's. It's good that they get out.
That's part of their physical education.
I mean, I see them walk all the way from the school.
But do they do it every day or once a week or?
Depends upon the.
Each class goes once.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it could easily be coordinated.
It could be.
To change the time. Or they could go after one.
Yeah, really, what's the difference for them if they're closed?
Think about afternoon running around in the water park would be nicer than nine in the morning, but.
Jim class at nine.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Change the schedule.
Well, like I say, I just, the, the more we limit the hours, the less water would be wasted.
Well, I think that if we're asking residents to cut back on water, then as a municipality, we should set an example.
Well, that's not us cutting back on water, that's us forcing the residents to cut back on water for recreational use, but I am in favor of. Reducing the hours of it. I originally thought that we suggested our too long stuff. I think optics wise, it's better that we do as much. As a municipality. And there's, the pool is still there. It's still over the pool.
Oh, no, that's a different thing. Okay, Shannon.
Just wondering if you would want to consider reducing the hours, but allowing for some flexibility of the school request content.
If it's not hard to reprogram the clock, then.
Then we could internally here maybe consider it based on the conditions.
To be like a manual upgrade switch.
It's just a timer. We just go set a timer, much like all of our irrigation systems. It's just a setting.
Oh, I guess there would be in my, in my way of thinking. That would be better if we could even send the school a letter saying that if you want to go in the morning when the water park is off. Please put in a request a, a week early or whatever, so it can be scheduled with maybe the guy's out cutting the lawn, so he just has to go and. Turn it on. But I just don't see where we all need to be. In a spray park all day long. Like I know in great big heat waves, you know, people turn on in down, in other places, they turn on fire hydrants and, and things like that. That means you've got to have lots of water because it's just running down the street. I'm not saying our park is abused. It's just that is water and it's one hundred percent waste. It doesn't even go to a lawn.
It goes straight to drain.
Goes straight to drain. Yeah, it's no hit damage.
Is it?
Treat it too.
Yeah.
There is a difference between how Madison Hat and how we operate as well. Uh, Madison Hat has multiple raw water intakes where we only have one, so the level of the river detrimentally affects our operations. Sometimes when we are running the spray park and people are running, um, the, their irrigation, uh, we have to recover some of that in our clear well. So that's something to keep in consideration as well.
So. Well, exactly as James, well, I'm, I'm still not clear.
Yeah.
That we eliminate the.
Well, eliminate the spray park. No, that we.
I think it was a one to five thirty. Is, yeah, but those, like, that can be changed. That's just, that's further limiting what was actually suggested. But. But if it's like Kathy, she was there and saw everybody using them, then, but like I say, if the school requests it and we can turn it on, then that's not an undue hardship.
I think that's a good compromise.
But five thirty.
Well, I think seven.
I get off at five. If I had kids, wanted to take them to the spray park after supper.
Yeah.
It'd be shut down.
Well, I think seven o'clock is not.
Yeah, but you don't have kids.
That's not, but.
I do.
Somebody does.
I think seven o'clock is more reasonable.
Well, then that's what it already says.
Yeah, well, that's why I was asking what the motion on the table was.
Yeah.
I don't think it said one to seven.
Well, I thought it said one to seven.
Yeah.
Is that what you want, Jim? Is that your motion? Doesn't even know.
Considering it.
Hang on. And so on stage two, then we are totally closing it. We're not be doing it any hours.
Stage two.
That's what it says.
Yeah.
Yes. But we could split up the motion and bring it back at a later date if we decide to do the stage two. That is not impending yet.
As you said, there's a stay open.
There's, there's a nine to nine.
Nine to nine.
Even if they go to a stage two, they're.
I, I haven't gotten that information yet.
I thought I, I agree, sorry. I thought I, I heard you say that, sorry.
That would be in their law enforcement response plan, if I have a moment, I can look it up.
Yeah, well, why don't we go from one to seven, like the, like the.
The motion says?
Like the motion says.
Okay, then that's option one.
Yeah.
Good.
Special request from students, in case they did use it in the morning.
With, with the. Further that. The schools, if they needed earlier, they can ask for permission.
I think so. What about like the daycare? What is, that's.
On that, I mean, you just gotta be that guy.
But I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to think about the other allegations.
Yes.
And can, would be limited to local schools?
Uh, I would think that would be a yes.
Yeah.
Because they also are short of swimming pool this year.
What?
Isn't it?
There.
Yeah, so shutting down the leisure center.
What's?
Old for me.
It's all.
Oh, yeah, that big pump group.
Yeah, redoing the wave action, yeah.
So would we allow my staff says and just go on here and request?
No, no, we wouldn't hear that on special for them.
Well, my staff, schools, sorry, classes?
We would not.
Well, they could use that.
I don't know, no, we haven't voted yet.
My, my question was if it was only local schools.
Local schools, yes, that would be.
So, option one with the option for schools to request an earlier start if they're taking. Students up there.
Directly schools.
Yeah, yeah, that. Anybody else want to amend Jim's motion? Poor guys get beaten.
I think it's too many hours.
Well, then vote it down.
I will. Then, vote it down.
Yeah, I don't know, but I don't go up there and watch.
I know that, like, my kids have used it at six, seven o'clock at night before in the past. They don't have to, but I know it does happen, and it's usually, I gotta been there in the evening with my kids at seven o'clock, and there'll be over a dozen kids there playing in the water, so. Like, I, I understand what Kathy's saying, but anyway, also, I understand that we gotta set an example with restricting water and. Um, you know, if we can do it voluntarily and not have to get to stage two, that would be better, so.
If we go.
I guess until our window is not unacceptable.
If we go more restrictive with the hours. And we find that that's not working, we can always go back to.
Or if we find that it's not being used and where we see too much water, we can also make it smaller.
No, no, if, if it's not being used, we're not wasting water, because somebody asked the question about.
I only see, as soon as it's dark outside. There's no kids there.
Yeah, well, we may still close them before dark.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not a bad shot.
But yeah, after supper. There's a lot of kids there with their parents.
Well, what's everybody's thoughts on the one PM then? Is there any movement on that to two PM, perhaps?
Whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's my one out of six hours that we're reducing.
You're saying twelve percent?
More than that.
Yeah.
Okay, it's been major.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just vote for it.
Yeah, alright, yeah, that's.
More on it.
I guess fair. Before we're all patients. And, everybody's clear? One to seven with requests from rent of schools. To open if they're going early.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Let's carry.
That's democracy, that is okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Alright. Fifth Street, Southeast Infrastructure Update Project.
I'll put motion number one on the table so we can. A. Gotta be positive.
Yeah.
So, I have questions.
Okay.
Pretty sure that I read this right, and I understand what, what's happening here, obviously, we hired this company to design the project.
Yes.
They done that.
Yes.
They need an extra to do the. Looky loo.
Yep. Now, they're saying, well, instead of tendering construction management of this project. Here's a price for us just to do it. And that price is under our required amount to send it up to tender. So that's why it's before council?
It's above the required amount. Right, so because of the amount, I would have to put it out to tender, but because it's a scope change, it falls underneath the purchasing policy, which allows me to bring it in front of council to get it approved. So what, by doing this, we do not delay the project. It just smooth this.
But it won't go out for tender.
But yeah, yeah, just say that this is the best price and. It may or may not be.
But you also reduce the risk of an additional engineering firm coming in and having to redo it with the discrepancies that come second streets.
That turned into a mess. So. When I read through these. Documents, this spreadsheet at the very end here. Um, they're est- making most of their estimations based on what was done over here last summer. Is that a fair statement?
Hmm, I think they looked at the project itself, and it is similar in nature to Second Street, yes.
Similar in nature that we're gonna find a bunch of extras to, or.
Well, this one, they'll have a harder time pointing the finger at somebody else because.
They engineered.
They were them.
MPE only, uh, bills for hours work. So they could.
They kind of underestimated.
And could have.
So I would like to ask their rate. Because on a two month project, to bill you a hundred and forty six thousand dollars is a heavy bill. You know, per hour.
Well, they've got ninety two thousand eight hundred in full time and park inspection.
For two months. So they're paying somebody forty five thousand a month. It's a good gig.
I don't know what this six hundred and, oh, six hundred hours. Of de-vitality, six hundred hours of de-vitality inspection? They're estimating? Are they gonna have someone standing in the hall?
Uh, depends on what phase of the construction. When it comes to a monitoring their water, they have to have twenty four hour. Surveillance on that.
What, what do you mean monitoring?
So when they're, when they're in the middle of the project, they will be supplying water from the hydrants. They will require twenty four hour monitoring of that to make sure there's no, um, contamination.
So you're gonna pay someone to send a car and stare at a fire hydrant?
Yes, to make sure nobody can.
I remember seeing the guy when they were working on second. Sitting there for hours, yes.
For twenty four days?
Yes.
Twenty four days.
Six hundred hours. According by math, by.
At forty hours a week, wouldn't that be fifteen weeks?
It's a work week.
Well, he's at twenty four hours, so. There's twenty four hours a day, so seven days a week.
Oh.
That's it, be two hundred and forty hours, twenty four.
Five, seven, some sorts, twenty five days.
Well, I didn't see that, I would be some more than. Wait a minute. I didn't realize they had to monitor them.
What's that? They didn't do that on Second Street.
Well, Kathy says they did.
They did.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they did.
Yes, they did.
The car there in the corner.
They have to.
On Second Street, you know, last year, somebody was there.
Twenty four hours, when they get to the stage that they hook up everybody's water supply from the hydrant, after their bacterial, bacteriological testing, they have to be there.
Well, Jenny, you and I wandered the whole outside, there was nobody.
What? We weren't, John said?
No, we didn't, tell me that.
Okay.
There's nobody.
There was nobody.
There were not a soul outside.
I talked to a lot of people, I talked to a few of the people that live on the block, no, there, there was nobody.
Not confirmed or deny that statement.
And, and definitely, I was. Stepping over the black lights.
Yes.
Laying on the ground. Anyway, that's okay, then. Could have been a bad day.
Could have been a bad day.
We catch somebody sleeping, so we take pictures of it, is everyone getting credit? Anyway, okay.
I don't know how to deal with this. I, I like the idea of sending it out to tender, but. Then you risk. Central problems if you hire someone else. Or finger pointing if you hire someone else, or. Pay more money.
An additional ten to fifteen weeks, uh, project delay.
Don't have.
Well, it depends, it's gonna happen this year.
Yeah, that's really, next option is. Like, delay the year and then inflation it, it's ended out for tender?
It goes out on Wednesday if this is approved.
Okay, if this is approved, well.
Because he can directional.
Nobody, nobody will. Monitor the tenders then. Anyway. We need this motion.
Forget it.
James did.
Extra hour.
Okay. Okay.
Well, that would just come along.
Does anybody else have any more questions? It just what?
It's kind of our retirement.
Well, yeah, but those are, that's still money.
Yeah.
It just feels like they have us. Well, I'm not gonna say that.
Doesn't matter whether it comes out of your check at the clock or your seat, it's still coming up.
That's exactly right, Jim.
That is a true statement. It seems like every project we do this happens.
Well.
That's because we don't allow.
There's, there's something, there's something that can be done. Just not today. Okay. Alright. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Scared?
Don't have to like it though, right?
Uh, no, no, we don't.
Good.
Game. Fifth Street, Southeast Service Upgrade, learning services for consideration. Yeah.
I'm gonna move option number five. That's a positive motion.
Wow.
Well, it's really hard to make an informed decision without the information.
You do it all the time.
They.
And I can only work with what our administration gives me.
After I say that, uh, what is it, garden service exactly? It's a second service to the watering line.
Yes, we're just, like, all ready here.
No, no, the town comes and installs a meter in the spring and takes it out in the fall, and there's a fee for it. Right?
Okay.
And like this, well, like this preamble says, only two of the known four actually have the town come and hook it up and unhook it. So two of them may not even know they have that extra service, and they're wondering why they keep mowing over this box, or they just manage to water from their house. But that was the theory, they're all on those little half inch lines that they could actually flush the toilet and water the lawn at the same time. Because otherwise you don't.
No. I have a half inch service to my house.
Yeah.
Being one thing at a time, that's it.
I live a block and a half away, and I know what it's like. Yeah. So. But it sounds like only two of them are using it. So. I believe that if everybody's gotten a letter that they can upgrade their service. That really. Is the key. Because if we offer these two or four people. Help. Or.
That's.
Spread the funding down the line, then, then we should be spreading the funding for everybody. I think we should, then you, and then you have to do something that if they run away, it goes onto the tax roll or something. Because it's gonna be money owed if they cut and run.
Yeah, yeah.
And I remember. Birth Street. In the three hundred block, the residents actually petitioned us. To allow them to put in bigger services, and they all paid it themselves. They had bigger services put in. There was a fellow from South Rock working here at the time, Robin. He was on top of that corner of the block, and they, because the street was being repaved, they actually petitioned us that they could put in services first. And we let them, um. Down on fourth, people petitioned us for. Services and pavement. We got that. Go ahead, Kathy.
The more you talk about it, the more I think, I live on the corner. I don't have a garden service, it was taken in two thousand and seven. But. I think I might have a little bit of a conflict, so I'm out here.
You're getting a new street, of course you're out of here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, we already know, I already have this. Anyway, new house. Garden service is long, so.
Three oh five.
Yeah, she's ready, she's ready.
Three oh one, okay.
Yeah, the street.
There's a hydrant right in front of her, it leaked, it lost water.
Yeah.
Good.
Honestly, I've never heard of this until.
Oh, no, I, I know people that haven't.
We should agree, let's work on eliminating.
Well, I agree, and, and if.
Boulevard's just to eliminate them?
Now, we don't know what the price the contractor would be asking to push these lines in. I assume that we're putting in. Up to the, a, a new and improved service to the curb stop.
Yes, and all garden services are to be removed.
Right.
So are we running like one inch to all the curb stops now?
Yeah.
So this is just from curb stop to house?
To their house.
Yeah, if you want more pressure, they could have. Or more volume, they could, uh, increase the size of their.
Yeah. Oh, I understand, funny. Like I said, I love that opportunity to be a good.
Well, and that, that's the thing, and if, if we pay for two or four. Then why aren't we offering it to all forty?
Yeah.
And then that becomes. That'll become a financial impact.
Yeah, well, for sure. Yeah, well, over here.
And, and the worst part is, I do believe the water is still on. The east side, so somebody, mind you, it's all coming from the curb stop, so everybody will have short runs, it's not like somebody will have a crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the water.
The guys across the street are actually gonna notice an improvement. Without even changing it, because all of a sudden you'll have, you'll have sixty six feet of one inch line and feet in your half inch line instead of.
I do believe all the garden services are on the east side.
They are, the ones I know of are on the east side.
Yeah.
But those are crazy big lots too.
They are, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Back in the day, those were. Notable homes.
Yes.
Big, uh, Ted Turner's must be a hundred footer.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And then Vic Lutz, he, he had one, like, so that was two in a row right there. Even their mechanic, he's on a fairly large lot, but I don't know if he has a garden service.
He's not on this project.
He's not on the project, you're right, he's in the two hundred block.
Mm-hmm.
And seven five.
True. No, there's, there are a few down there, big lots. Well, so you still have five.
Well, cause I've got one under the other ones.
Four on this project.
Well.
Oh, two, sorry, number one. Number one. I read number one wrong. Let's go with number one. Thank you. I'm gonna amend that motion.
The number one is just like everybody else, they can upgrade if they want to.
Yep.
Well, to me, that's treating them fair. You're either treating them fair this way or that way, I think, but.
No, number one is one and I just wrote that.
One and three are the two ways of treating them fairly. Yeah. Well, or four, I guess is fair too.
Yeah.
Okay.
So number one.
Number, that's, that's what I, I thought I wanted to say.
Yeah. Jim, we, at the time, we changed my views about to.
He's, I get that definitely wrong.
Is everybody clear?
Option number one.
I believe they've already gotten letters, right?
Yes.
The only thing nobody knows is how much the contractor will want to push when the trench is wide open, you just push into the house. And then everybody will have to, well, some, some people probably have to hire a plumber.
Well, but they were over here. They dug within like six feet of the house.
Well, some of them were very close. Yeah. They were the other, well, they're the other side of the sidewalk. Like property line can be close to your house, could be twenty feet away.
I currently have thirteen individuals wanting to get quotes.
Yeah. Well, if you've lived with that half inch line long enough. Yeah.
I've got one garden.
Even if you don't water your lawn, you're willing to have a shower and use the toilet at the same time. Not necessarily you, but somebody out in the house.
Running along three at the same time or anything.
Dishwasher kicks in when you shower and you're done.
There's a waste of my, your worship.
I, I lived there for a lot of years. That was cruel. Somebody got a glass of water while you were having a shower.
Yes.
Okay. Clear? No more discussion? All in favor of one? Opposed? Scared? Kathy can come back.
She was not there that.
She was that way. Scamper subject like, God. I can't leave. I have so many favorites.
Well, for me.
There is a more expensive option and that's to put up a generator building in agreement with basement. So I want a carbon generator. Yeah, it, it, two, three thousand dollars a year just to have somebody come by and verify this still works. Okay. Portable generator building electrical options for consideration. Option two. Chris, I'll get it going on yet. Number two.
What's your reasoning for two?
Just getting out the floor to talk basically.
Oh. Yes, I'm curious why do we have to heat the building?
I guess a motor. Just to keep it at zero. The, the heater presented in the quote was not enough to heat it substantially, but to keep it above freezing.
Right, but well, no, I get that, but you put a block heater on it that would probably draw less power to the minus thirty was that buildings inside really well. That's gonna be earning a lot of electricity and our operating costs. Just to mean gain zero, right? Seven five thousand kilowatts is not very much heat. Thousand BTUs.
Thirty-four, right? Twenty-one and twenty-two.
Yeah. Are you going forward?
So twenty-five thousand per kilowatt.
Some of us could still have to do anything. So and do a block heater, you still have to do interior plug-ins, right? Like stuff like that.
You have to put in lighting. Going in there at three o'clock in the morning, you gotta see what you're doing.
Using magic.
With diesel generator.
With a diesel generator.
We have a guy who's got to check battery levels up.
So number one, it just plugged in the building.
And hold on, that's cool.
And one light, one LED light.
One LED light.
Mm-hmm. So by trickle charging, does it also have a block heater?
On the generator?
Yeah.
I do believe so.
Okay. So what your trailer that sits in the public works yard, is it in the public works building? Is it still plugged in?
We, okay, we have two generators. The newer one sits outside on a trickle charger. The one inside we leave in because it's above freezing. It's not on a trickle charger because, well, we take the, pull the batteries. Um, the, the reasoning for this building was to put the older generator in it to power third and third and leave the newer generator at the public workshop to be pulled over to Jesmond if need be.
I didn't know, I didn't know that we're picking older news to go to certain spots.
I thought we just bought a second one.
So we could be at two different stations at the same time.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it can't operate in that building anyway. It has to be pulled out to be hooked up.
Exactly. And hooked up to the trucks first.
So all we care is it starts, which means it has to be plugged in.
Yes. Which is also option number one, which was included in the, the quote for the whole building.
Right. They just didn't plug, they just didn't include the, right.
Exactly.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't see why we need an electric garage door opener and a heater and.
Administration just wanted to provide council with options.
It will sound like there's more flair for option number one instead.
Well, it's just, it is just to keep the snow and even in a, even in an unheated building, it's still better inside than outside. Right? The climate is still better.
Yeah.
And as long as you're plugged in, that's the only way it's gonna start anyway.
Yeah.
If it was forty below twenty-five thousand BTUs in that garage, may not keep it warm enough to start. On zone.
It'd be like lighting a match.
It's, yeah. And it's supposed to be, well, they're supposed to have trucks there to actually hook up to the trailer, build it out so that they should have lights. Right? All of our trucks have lights.
Yes.
Cause you have to work sometimes at night. Weird thing. If not the safety committee, if you policies down from here, would make sure they have that. Anyway.
It will change it to, uh, option one. That sounds like more flair for that and makes more sense anyway.
Also the flowers.
And.
This place is already over.
Anybody else have comments or questions or concerns? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? And then temporary road closures for red carpet, consider consideration. Okay. Any questions or concerns? Being none, all in favor? Opposed? But it's carried. Moving on to policies. Yeah, policy one fifty-two being the protective, personal protective equipment policy.
A crew was presented.
This the one with, uh?
No.
Okay.
Not that.
Oops, yes, no.
The change you were looking for was on the working.
Good. All right. Thank you. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed? Scared? Then policy number one fifty-three, working alone policy. Um, Jim? So the only one I, change I had in here was I wanted to basically outline three different types of employment. Because in here they have, the way they worded it, it was kind of like shift work. For instance, working alone means to work alone at any time, whether it is a regular workday, scheduled work shift or after hours call in. Because we do have shift workers and we have regular day workers. And in the union contract, they're treated differently.
Right.
There are some clauses that kick in for shift workers that don't kick in for regular day workers. So I just wanted to keep those three differentiated in here.
At the desk.
So because if somewhere in the world we lump them together, then they're going to be considered lumped together all over. Here. Well, it'll be. That's, that's the only thing I asked Shannon. If that could be changed.
So Jim would have to do it as amended.
Jim, can you do, can you make that motion as amended to?
As amended, sure.
Go ahead, Chris.
Um, under policy first sentence, where an employee is required to work alone, the town Red Clough shall first conduct a hazard assessment to identify existing or potential hazards arising from the conditions and circumstances of the employee's work and establish an effective means of communication between the employee and person's capable of responding to the employee's needs. Now, how hindering is that for administration is?
I think that should say employee, cause you're supposed to do your field level hazard assessment every day, right? So you're supposed to do your own.
Oh, so the town's not doing it.
Yeah, but if, if you put employee in there, then that person has to, before you even start work, you have to do a field level hazard assessment that says what you could be working and working alone is a hazard. So then you have to put in what you're going to do to evade that. Whether that means following your supervisor, check on me in half an hour, those kinds of things.
Yeah.
So that, that happens in the real world too. You actually have to do that.
Okay.
So the employee does that.
They also have the overall hazard assessment though.
Okay, so, so who do you want to be doing that? Does somebody's called out in the middle of the night? Does somebody have to rush out there? Some management have to rush out there to conduct a hazard?
Yeah.
There's a.
So there's a blanket hazard assessment for working alone.
Yes.
As a, like a work procedure, work safe procedure.
And then they would have their individual field study assessments.
Yes.
And in that blanket hazard assessment, it outlines what the communication steps are.
Does that blanket assessment though cover this?
Yeah, it would be like a, it would be like a work procedure, right? Like.
Well, I, I get that, but I'm not sure that it covers it the way it's worded here. It's the way it's worded to me, they, the management has to, will do something every time.
The town of Red Clough, so who is the town of Red?
So we as a whole have identified situations or scenarios where there is a potential for employees to be working alone. And then have seven steps.
So this policy is not stating when they get dispatched. This policy is stating that we have to have this hazard assessment done up for working alone as like a safe work procedure. And that's what that wording means. It's not task specific, it's overall specific.
When an employee is required to work alone, the town shall first.
And it's working a little goofy. Agreed. That's why I thought.
The way I read it, Joe gets called up for something, town has to first conduct a hazard assessment.
Yeah, that's how I first read it. It's just worded goofy, I think.
Would anybody else read it the same way I'm reading it? And if so, is there a different way to word it? They don't read it that way, then that's okay.
Well, there's nothing like being clear. Cause if three people can read this different, then it's going to cause confusion.
So you want to send it back with the wording, okay, look at the wording, then we'll come back next time?
If you don't have great wording right now.
You don't have great wording right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I can have to agree with you.
Chris, okay.
Good. So we can.
What do I need to just remove those first seven words? You just started at the town of Red Clough. The first, conduct a hazard assessment to identify existing or potential hazards arising from the conditions and circumstances. And then that's saying that we're gonna create a hazard assessment that states how you can work alone.
Yeah, not when you're required to work.
Yes, then we're gonna do. Yeah. I think if you just remove like up to that first comma.
That could work.
Yeah.
That would clear it up.
That's how I'm going to break them.
Yeah.
Does that work? You have a bad call?
Choking.
Maybe a red hand for you.
There's three or four people here with expired first aid certificate, so we can wash.
And that's my emergency training yet, so please don't have an emergency in there.
Yeah, that. Okay.
Are you okay with that amendment, Jim?
Sure.
It's your motion.
Yeah, and I think that addresses the question I have very well.
Yeah.
Right up to the comment, just take it off. Start that calendar. Right? Right? Any other concerns on that policy? Everybody clear? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. And then policy one fifty-four, safety training policy.
One move that would be approved is presented.
Questions or concerns?
Are we just making all these policies to fit in with all the wage stuff?
Yes.
Yes.
I heard, but I just don't understand. Well, I just see there's no previous dates on these.
No, these are all new. All three of these are new. They're.
They are.
And that's, interpretation is everything. No questions? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Being on. Letter to the little guys. We are a little guy. Says so right in here.
Receive for information.
Kathy?
It's viral.
Yeah. Well, at least they're not giving us go in the dark water.
That was, hey, that might still come.
Well, there you go.
Go ahead. Question about this. Um, what, because I just do. So private irrigation, including those with irrigation type activities like golf courses. The expectation is implement the same restriction of water use as the current on farm water limit set by closest irrigation district. And if I read correctly, I think they reduced it from eighteen inches down to eight inches.
Yes.
S M R I D is allocated eight.
Okay.
The highest they've ever given is eighteen. It's not normal here.
Okay.
I think last year was twelve.
No, it was eighteen last year.
No.
No. So are they expecting, we will of course to reduce their water usage by half then? Is that what he's saying here? He's saying here?
Well, yes. It is asked upon them. But that also depends on your land usage, correct?
So what are our policies supersede that?
Our restrictions, it are, well, at this point in time, yes. This is our stage of our dialogue, uh, we are at. If Alberta announces a different stage, they supersede anything we put out.
I also think a lot of this, there are golf courses with water licenses, like the Minnesota Golf and Hydro Club. They have their own water license.
Read for them.
So for them, that matters, right? For, with us, they get, our golf course gets our water from us. So that's still falling into all municipalities in the South Saskatchewan river basin. So.
That's fair.
Yeah, like, but there are, and there's probably other golf courses that have their own supply, like EID might give water to golf courses. I, you know, I don't know them all.
So this would go further.
Not bonus out at their offices too, so.
I think that's when they say private irrigation. I think that's what they're referencing.
Like Mr. Huber, like there's lots of people that pull from the river.
That's it.
Yeah. So they don't get to full unlimited amounts and their buddies only get eight inches. Like they, 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 they're, she's asking everybody to work together and to reduce together.
Yeah, anyone who has their own separate system.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So to answer my question, yes, they're expecting golf courses to go down by fifty percent. Doesn't really play well.
Exactly.
Not as, not as bad, but perfectly, yeah.
Okay, just still be able to golf on. Well, I don't have time to golf.
All in favor of receiving information?
Opposing?
Okay, council, important meeting, thin events. Fred, Matt, get inside. All right.
Save the date on there anymore.
I anticipate a DPC meeting in May.
We may have a DPC.
Potentially on the twenty-third. Potentially on the twenty-third. I'm on the opposite one sixteen.
When you started with me?
I work.
I think a May GPC meeting, you can, on the twenty-third, is that the name?
Let's see, where am I in May?
You're gone.
I'm gone, yeah, yeah. Were you too?
Well, let's see.
You're the, it's Larry.
Yeah.
Dollar.
And more here.
Sorry, go to that here. Unfortunately, I have nothing in my calendar for that.
Yeah, okay. Works for you?
Why don't I put out?
Works for most.
Cause right.
I was going to go golfing that day.
Right now I see three people that.
Well, Larry and Kathy and Dwight won't build them, okay?
And myself.
So there you go. Yes, because Larry's still gone and two, isn't he?
One o'clock here would be. Now I'm not going to take.
Okay, I'll put out a, um, email just to see what things might work for.
Never been so happy.
That's one of my least favorite.
I'm not.
Where it goes, what, we have a biolog?
And you say that he even.
Dwight told you, Dwight told me that sixty-two club is real.
I'm past that.
Only made it all the way up.
Yeah, long time ago. I don't know why I wasn't pulling out my C P P to get in on this benefit, this one time grab.
Even though I was just silly.
Three hundred and twenty-eight hundred bucks.
Just about a lot of beer.
Okay. Uh, five minute recess because.
Can we vote on that?
Challenge.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor? Opposed?
This is a test for Shannon.
Yeah.